Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Manizza City Council Ordinary Meeting. The time is 9:01 AM, and I now declare this meeting open. Manizza City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders, past, present, and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people in attendance today. Please note, this Ordinary Meeting of Manizza City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded by remaining in chambers. It is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd now like to invite Corps Officer Natalie from the Salvation Army to grace us with a prayer.
Yes, good morning. Thanks very much for the invitation to be here today. I am a Corps Officer. I'm also a wife, and a mum, and a grandma. And this past week, I had a very proud grandma moment. Our daughter, who lives in Tamworth, sent a clip of our grandchildren tucked in bed saying their nighttime prayers. So if you can imagine Elsie with curly hair, big brown eyes, such an explorer, voracious appetite for learning new things, and her big brother Judah, who's soon to be seven, who is the protector and defender of mostly his toys from mostly his little sister Elsie. So they're snuggled in bed with the quilt pulled up high to their chins, protecting them from the Tamworth winter weather, and they're saying their prayers. If you would bear with me, it's just a short little audio clip. I hope this works. I'll start again.
Our Father who is in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done. Preserve us as a living heaven. Give us our day, our daily bread. Give us our sins as we forgive those who sin against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours be the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Now, it's more than a cute moment for me as I watch that clip. It was a profound learning moment about prayer. These are a couple of short things I learnt about prayer from watching my grandchildren. It's not about getting all the words right all the time. They forget words. They stumble over their words. Sometimes they say, quite humorously, the wrong thing. They don't even understand everything that they are saying, but they say it with great heart. They bring all of themselves to it. Also, they're working together. There's times that one of them forgets the words, and the other one steps in and picks up the prayer and keeps going. They're supporting each other with a lovely heart of humility as they pray. So today, I ask you if you would join with me in the Lord's Prayer today. You may know it in a different version from what I do. You may know just a part of it and not all of it. You may want to say quietly to yourself, but I do invite you to join in and say it out loud with me this morning, and then I'll just close with a short blessing for your meeting today. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our sins as we forgive those who sin against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Father God, I just pray for this meeting here today. As everyone here meets today, may they meet with all their hearts and with humility as they discuss and debate. Lord, I pray that they bring their whole selves into this discussion as they deliberate and decide. Lord, may they do it with humility, learning from one another along the way. May your purposes for this amazing community of Manizza be fulfilled today. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Corps Officer Natalie. That was surprising. I usually have an expectation of what, you know, certain sort of prayer, but that was really good. I'm really impressed with that. That was awesome, yeah. And thank your grandchildren. You don't look old enough to have grandchildren, by the way, but thank your grandchildren for that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, well, that takes us now to item three, which is apologies and leave of absence.
Yeah, I'd like to apologize for councillor Streton.
Thank you. Do we need to do a motion for that?
He's in Darwin.
Does someone want to put a motion forward?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that we accept an apology from councillor Paul Streton for today's meeting.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae. All those in favour? And that's carried? Okay, we have no public participation today. That now takes us into the confirmation of previous minutes. And that's 5.1 minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on the 19th of July 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Oh, well, I'd like to move that the minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on the 25th of January 2023?
19th of July? I've got 19th of July.
Eight-six it is. 19th of July.
Sorry, I must be on the wrong. I must... I don't believe... Phil, do you want to do it?
Yeah, I'll move, yeah. Thanks, councillor. I'll move the minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on 19th of July 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Can I get a second for that motion? Anyone want a second for that motion? Thank you.
I have read it.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us next to our next minutes of the special meeting held on the 14th of August 2023, which is item 5.2. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 14th of August 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Any discussion on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item six, which is the actions from previous council meetings, and 6.1, which is outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 18th of August 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I can do that. I'd like to move that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the 18th of August 2023.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, through the chair, can I just... The variation of additional works at Lyons Park Basketball Court, what is that again?
I'll hand it over to Stephen. I'll just get him a microphone.
The underground work, wasn't it?
Stephen, can I just get you to do a microphone? Sorry, otherwise no one can hear on the livestream.
Hold it down. Stephen?
Yeah, very early on in the works, doing the excavation, the site had apparently been used for a tipple for dumping rubbish or old materials. So not only was it quite unsound, it was very spongy. So they had to actually excavate quite a bit out and put decent material back, which was not picked up by the geotech. It wasn't a particularly big area, but we managed to pick the area that was worst affected, so.
Is that actually a question, councillor?
Oh, no. So that doesn't... So does that include the variation, doesn't include how we've asked to put some bollards or something up, blocks up, that's not to do with that?
No, there won't be variation because we won't be asking the contract to do that. It'd be a variation to the project and the overall scope of things, but it won't be a variation in the contract.
No worries. Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks, Stephen. Okay, so that now takes us to item seven, which is declarations of conflict of interest to do with... Oh, sorry. We do need to vote on that. All those in favour? Councillor Fortune? And that's carried. Getting ahead of myself. So the next one's item seven, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Does anyone concede a declaration, conflict of interest with this agenda?
No.
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 No. Thank you. And that takes us now to the mayoral minute. And I just want to let councillors know that I have requested a notice of motion to go to our next Ordinary Council meeting, and it's for a report to come up to our Ordinary Meeting in November 2023, and this is just me being transparent. And I'm asking for a report to come up to offer ratepayers of choice on how they pay for water, an option of either a two-part tariff, so stay as they are, or to go to an allocation like prior to the two-part tariff coming in. As part of this motion, I'd also like, if people do select the allocation, an option or an investigation into being able to purchase an additional allocation of water on top of that. So we all know that if you, once you go over your allocation or once you're on the two-part tariff, once you go past a certain point, water becomes very expensive. And there are people out there that definitely use more water. And so this could actually make it more affordable for them. This has been very successful, having the choice in Townsville and Whitsundays and other councils around Queensland. And we have been offered by those councils for any of the back-end work that needs to be looked at. Prior to now, we haven't had the smart meters in. So with the last 1,500 smart meters going ahead, now's the time to look at if this can be put forward to Manizza and implemented in the next financial year. So that's just more transparency on that one.
Sorry, just through the chair, wouldn't this have some implications to the budget that we've already passed?
Yeah, well, I think she's flagging that it would be something for next year's budget.
So why would we be doing it now?
Because what happens is, we need to, in November, when the report comes up and say we vote for it, we need time to get all the back-end work on that done so that we can have the technology so we can charge. If it goes through, on a two-part tariff or on the allocation. So that's just giving enough notice for the council to be able to put that through.
Yes, I'm not clear on that. Madam Mayor, oh, sorry. So we would need data from the meters, I would imagine?
That's right.
New meters, yeah. So wouldn't we need a period of time for that to occur, maybe a year, something like that?
No. Look, we've already got councils all around Queensland doing this process, so this is not new. This is... And they've actually offered a couple of councils to give us the back-end work. What we do need, though, is having the smart meters installed. And by the next financial year, they will be all installed. And obviously, this is a decision and a discussion for November. I'm just making it transparent that I have asked the CEO to put a report forward. Councillor Fortune, sorry?
Can I just clear that up? So the mayor sent me a notice of motion, and it needs to be considered by council at the next meeting because you've got to give five days' notice to be clear of a notice of motion. So your debate can happen at the next meeting. I think she just wanted to make it clear that she was going to put it up next meeting rather than having a debate about it now.
Yeah. And if, part of that, if you could make clear what give back in work means, because to me, that would be technology. I don't know if you can just give that, but that would be good also.
It's basically giving all the information on how they have implemented the system. And if you get on Whitsundays Facebook page, you can actually put in the kilolitres that you used for the last year. So say it's 900 kilolitres. Then you press a button, it calculates. If you go to a two-part tariff, it's going to cost you this much. If you go to an allocation, it's going to cost you this much. And actually, so it helps you pick the cheapest alternative for yourself.
Yeah, I think I understand that because we've had this discussion many times. And I think no matter how you slice it and dice it, if some people are getting it cheaper, someone else is going to get it more expensive. That's just how you have to break up a bill. Someone has to pay.
That's actually not correct. So what happened is, all the councils that have implemented this system have actually made more money. And it stopped being an election issue because everyone was happy. And those who want an allocation, they had it. And those who want to stay on the two-part tariff, they had it. So it actually just solved everyone's issues. And the councils, in fact, made more money from the system because obviously, when you have an allocation, sometimes you don't use it all. And if you have a two-part tariff, you can go over. So there's all those things in play.
Okay, so if you can show me how you can make it cheaper for everybody and still pay the bill, I'm more than happy. So I'll be looking forward to that.
That's fine. All right, let's move on. Oh, sorry, councillor Fortune. You hearing that, Stephen? Also, Tim is going to have a chat to John Perry as well because he will be able to help us with this one. When it comes to your thoughts on rainfall, Whitsundays was in that very predicament when they, with the merging of councils within that area, you had a couple of places that really didn't get rainfall and where other places got a lot of rainfall. So this was a fantastic alternative for them. It works really well in Townsville. And yes, I think the more information we've got at the table, the better so that you can make an informed decision. So yes, definitely. Absolutely. And I think, you know, if you drive around Manizza, you can see people aren't watering. So, you know, this may be a solution for that because there's no doubt that there are a lot of properties out there that are looking very dry and unwatered, for want of a better word. So, anyway, thank you.
One more thing. Madam Mayor, I think we need to have the full background in there as well, describing the reasons that we moved away from allocations to the consumption charges because the council here went through quite a bit of a journey and it cost council quite a lot of money in court cases and things through a challenge. And I think we need to have all that background in there describing the reasons why we are where we are today.
I think that sounds great because at the time, I don't believe we, the community, got why the council did it. You know, it was definitely council implemented it and we were told after the fact. So I think that's a...
Well, actually, yeah, but there was a lot more to it than that.
That's right. And I don't think the community have been made aware of what that is. And even to this day, I don't know. So that would be good. All right. So if we go now to item 10, which is executive services reports, and 10.1, which is the updated policies for adoption. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor. The council adopts the following updated statutory policies. One, the administrative actions complaints policy, the code of... Two, the code of conduct for councillors. Three, the complaints about a public official policy. Four, council acceptable request guidelines. Five, the councillor investigation policy. Six, the human rights policy. Seven, the public interest disclosure policy. Eight, the entertainment policy. Nine, the complaints policy. And 10, the fireworks policy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to comment on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. These policies, as listed, and there are more to come, I believe, they are required to be reviewed regularly and they're falling due. So there's a list of policies there that, and they're attached, and they have the amendments in there, which are mainly cosmetic. And the largest one is the last one, the fireworks policy, which has had considerable changes made to it because of operational needs. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? Everyone happy? Thanks, Murray. You've done a lot of work on this. And yeah, I just want to thank you for the effort you've put into getting these policies up to date. And I know that's a few more to go, but thank you for the effort there. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next one is item 10.2, which is the Audit and Risk Committee, appointment of external member. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is... Oh, shit, I've lost it.
Page 103.
What was it, 10.2? Recommendation is that council appoint Peter Shaville to the position of independent member for the Audit and Risk Committee for the remainder of the term of this council and for a period of two years with the option of a further two years upon satisfactory review within the term of the new council.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Councillor Tully, would you like to talk on this one?
Yeah, I mean, it is difficult to have independent members to sit on boards, regardless of what board it is. So I think with Peter, I mean, he's a good appointment, and with Kerry as the chair, I think, you know, the thing is in, the Audit and Risk Committee is in good hands.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that now takes us to the Corporate and Community Services Reports, and 11.1, which is the Finance Overview Report for July 2023. Councillor Barwick, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. That council receives and accepts the July 2023 Finance Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So the figures there are presented for the first month of the financial year, the July figures. The revenue, we believe, should catch up in mid of September with the issuing of the rates. So it's behind a bit at the present time, but should balance out in due course. The expenses are below budget at this point and showing around about 84K behind budget. Outstanding rates are sitting at 11.3 million, and 5.5 million of that are in the six-month-plus arrears category. And as we, we do have strategies in place to address those long-term rates as well. Water consumption notices have been issued for the 11th of August, so that's all done. And as I just mentioned about the outstanding rates, there's a number of properties in arrears around three-plus years that are being notified of council's intention to sell up these properties to recover those debts under the Local Government Act. Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Any comments on this one? I've got a question, and it's probably a Chilean. With the long-term outstanding rates in arrear, have we identified which properties have been abandoned at the moment?
Yes, through the chair, we do have a register of all the abandoned properties, and there's a correlation between the overdue rates and the ones that have been abandoned. So we're hoping that with the action that we take to recover the outstanding rates by disposing of the land, that we should be able to correct that situation as well. But I can bring a report to the councillors just to give an update of which ones are on both lists.
That sounds great. And... Yeah, no, that sounds really good.
Just looking at those ratios, I mean, the explanation is sort of ringing alarms, really, to be honest, with the comments. Can we get a bit deeper in those comments?
Which ones, that councillor?
The ratios, the sustainability ratios that are on... I mean, they don't look good, and the comments don't really tell me anything.
So which items are we talking about, sorry?
The sustainability ratios, which is on, I don't know what page it's on.
111?
113.
Yeah, 113.
111. But the comments are on 113.
So through the chair, this is very typical in the first month of the financial year because we haven't raised any revenue per se. We haven't raised the rates. All you're seeing there is just an accrual for rates for the month of July. So once we raise our rates, you see those numbers, especially the net financial liabilities ratio stabilize. So it's at a point in time, and there's not a lot of activity in July.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors?
So when we say the operating surplus ratio is on track, what do we mean by that? Because I don't think that's on track to where it's going to be heading.
So for the month ended 31st of July, we're looking at a deficit of around $74,000. So it's not a material deficit at this point. And as I said, a lot of revenue hasn't yet been raised. So that comment is that we're not worried about it at this point. It is small. So we'll keep monitoring it.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions on this one, all those in favour? Councillor Tully? Yep. And that's carried. This takes us now to item 11.2, which is a splashes overview report for July. Councillor Coglan, would you like to...
The council receives and accepts the July 2023 splashes overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Oh, no. Look, there's not much to go on. It's a little bit cool. But we will be, as of the 1st of September, we start our summer trading. So I think things should start to heat up then. You have all the schools doing their learn to swim. Some swimming carnivals have been booked in. And also, the Isa Heat Swim Club will start up again. So look forward to more information in the next one.
Sounds great. Any other comments on this one? Nope. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us to item 11.3, which is the Corporate Services Overview Report for June and July for 2023. This one yours? Uh, this one yours, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the June two thousand and twenty three and July two thousand and twenty three Corporate Services Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Um, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, just a couple of highlights, um, uh, the water and sewer, um, uh, continue to lead the, um, the charge with calls and, um, into the administration, um, so that's our most significant, um, um, area of, um, interest, um. The after-hours calls, um, are steady, there's a hundred and thirty one calls after hours in June and a hundred and twenty calls to deal with, um, in July. Um, and, and in, um, in the, uh, referring to the I cases that council take up to work on jobs, the, um, uh, there's a hundred and thirty one, uh, sorry, there's, uh, four hundred and fifty in June that were taken up and another three hundred and eight in July. And, um, at the end of July, there was two hundred and eleven open cases left, um, which is down a little bit from, from the June open cases, about two twenty five, so they continue to work on those, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this one, or comments, councillors? Well, Gordon, all right, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next one is fourteen, uh, sorry, eleven point four, which is the Local Laws Overview Report for May and Jul- May to July for twenty twenty three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts a local laws overview report for May twenty twenty three to July twenty twenty three as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Uh, councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, I'll just give the overview on behalf of councillor Streton, the department continues to face challenges in the wake of increased public callouts on wandering dogs and feral cats loose in the community. In addition to the wandering dogs and cats issue, council staff have been fielding calls on increasingly aggressive dogs attacking people, other dogs and other domestic animals. Occasionally, staff have had to seek assistance from Queensland Police Service to execute property inspections and searches. A few dogs have been reclassified as dangerous dogs following various incidents. Declaration of a dog comes with a stringent condition regime which the dog owner has to observe for compliance at all times. The department has also been dealing with a number of noise nuisances, horse paddock inspections, abandoned and overgrown properties, abandoned vehicles, public parts, parks, footpath used higher, parking and illegal campany- camping. The department is sending dog registration renewal letters to all dog owners this month for this financial year. Um, I'd just like to add those people that, um, that paid for three years, um, hopefully they won't be getting one this year, they should, they should still have a year to go, and I would encourage people, if they're registering their animals, to, to take up that three-year offer. Also, and I'd like to encourage anyone with a dog to, um, or cat, to get them microchipped because we are getting a lot of animals, um, at the animal management facility, um, that aren't microchipped and they obviously come from good homes, so it'd just make the process a lot easier if people microchip their animals.
Absolutely. And this one may be to.
Through the chair, can I?
Yes, certainly.
Uh, through the chair, I'd just like to know when council, when local laws and police from the council are going to move on all the people in the riverbed that are illegally camping there.
Well, we are virtually, a- as you probably know councillor, we've approached, um, the police to see if we can actually, um, sub- pay for extra patrols. And we are, we've, we've mentioned this to Mount Isa Mines and we're meeting with Mount Isa Mines to see if they're interested in helping with some of the crime and antisocial behaviour as well. So definitely, um, I'm hoping that we can do a lot more patrols, especially tip-outs in the Laitart River because at the moment I think they're sporadic. So if they were, um, definitely more staged, so if they, if they were doing tip-outs three times a day, I think you'd find a lot of people would give up going down there to, to drink and camp.
But that's not answering my question, I want to know, because we are trustees of the riverbed, and I want to know when those people are going to be moved on and gotten out of the riverbed.
Well, I've, I've been having some vulnerable person meetings for the last three weeks, um, councillor, I, I think you've been away. But all councillors are invited to come along, I think the deputy mayor has come along, so we are working with all the, um, um, non-government agencies and government agencies, including, I think it's DS stats, I don't know their new, the acronym's terrible, but, um, so we're all meeting to talk about, um, how we get people out of the riverbed, so you're welcome to come along, um.
But, but what I'm saying is, they're there illegally, we should be moving them on now, they should be out of the riverbed.
We know that, but we've got nowhere to move them to, the.
Well, when it rains, they're not there, so they evidently have got somewhere to go.
Um, all the crisis accommodation is, is full. So we have, um, at the moment, one of the NGOs is, is funded to try and get people back home. So that, that's happening at the moment, we're, we're talking to all the crisis accommodations on how many more people they can take. Uh, and we have, we've talked to, um, one of the mayors in the Northern Territory, we've talked to one of the ministers in the Northern Territory. I've talked to different departments in the state government about the situation. Um, again, the, when I spoke to Chris Serra, who's the, uh, deputy, sorry, he was a, uh, DG, so, um, for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander at the time, he wanted to set up a, uh, decision-making indigenous group in Mount Isa, which I'm told by DS dat sip or whatever the acronym is, that they've only just accepted their terms of reference. And this would be one of their main projects is to work with everyone to try and help get people out of Laitart River.
Yeah, but it, it's not their problem, it's our problem and we're the ones responsible for it. So why are we not going down there issuing notices to get them out?
Um, we don't want to send, from what I can gather, we're, we're not sending our local law staff down there by themselves because we believe it's dangerous.
It never was, they always go with police when they do it.
That's right.
So when are we going to do that?
Well, if, if you like, why, why don't you attend one of the vulnerable persons meetings?
I, I have, we've been having them for nearly two years.
Well, I haven't seen you in the last.
Yeah, I have been there, Madam Mayor.
You went, you went there last week?
No, no, I wasn't.
There the week before, and you weren't there the week before.
Listen, it's our job to move them on, that river's an absolute disgrace at the moment and they need to be moved on, so we need to do our job.
Absolutely, councillor, just, I just want to remind you of your code of conduct in meetings.
I'm allowed to talk.
You are, but you don't need to raise your voice and speak.
That wasn't raising my voice, if I raised my voice, you wouldn't be in the room.
Councillor, do you need to have some time out here?
No, I don't need to have time out, I'd like you to answer the question when we as a council are going to do our job.
You want me to answer this because there's seven of us who are councillors, it's up to all seven of us, it's not just up to the mayor, no, no, let me finish.
It is up to the mayor.
Councillor, I caution you now, you'll, um, don't.
Caution me because I haven't done anything wrong.
You're speaking over me when I'm speaking as the chair.
Go on.
Have you read the standing orders?
Oh, time and time again.
Okay, so what are we doing as councillors, councillor, because that's the question, and I know what I'm doing, I'm meeting with everybody. What are you doing? Because you're not at the table and coming to a council meeting and, and asking the question, when you haven't attended anything is not fair, when we as si- seven councillors should be coming up with some solutions. It's not up to me to come up with solutions on one vote. I'm organising the meetings, please come along because I welcome you, your, your input.
My input would be to go down and issue notices to those people to move them on and actually bulldoze any areas where they are congregating.
Well, how about we have a meeting on this then, instead of waiting to come?
You don't need to have a meeting on it.
Please don't talk over me, I'm, I am the chair.
Oh, my God.
Councillor.
You should learn, you should read the act. Because we are responsible for that riverbed and we need to do something, we don't need to have a meeting, we can just make a decision.
Just wonder if you could cease your conduct at the moment, please, and let, let people finish their sentence before you jump in. I agree, but there's no point you turning up at a meeting with no discussion with any of the councillors in the room and just saying, what are you doing? You were voted in as long with all of us, six, to sort any issues out. So I have been organising meetings, the, a- and you're welcome to attend. Now, I'm happy to sit down with you and work out what we can do as a, as a council, and we have Tim on board, he, he will take that direction. But there's no point you being missing in action and then coming to a meeting and then saying, what are you doing? Please come to the meetings, call a meeting, I will attend if you want to talk about this particular item. But it, it, but just turning up at a meeting saying, what are you doing, when I'm holding mi- meetings every week to try and get people out of the Laitart River? Thank you.
Councillor Coglan, would you like a report brought up similar to the one that we're getting for water?
No, actually, I know what I'm going to do now.
Would you like to have a meeting?
No, it's all good.
Are you sure you don't want to have a meeting because there are seven councillors here who are keen to solve this issue?
All good. I'll go another direction.
Well, I think, I'll just end at this, we need to work together on this issue, it can't be people going in solo. And, and it's going to take all the government approach, it's going to take all NGO approach. I'm knocking everybody's door, but it would be great to sit down as a council and talk about how do we manage this? We can't send local laws down there, it is dangerous. Please tell us that if they issue fines, they never get paid and they mean nothing, the only thing that will really work is tip-outs. And I'm keen to, um, you know, work with the police and even the Mount Isa Mines and whoever else to see how we can, um, in- increase patrols, not just with the Laitart River but around the city. And I'm happy to call a meeting, attend if you want to. All right, any other discussion on the local laws? All right, councillors, all those in favour? And that's carried. Eleven point five, which is the Library Overview Report for June and July twenty twenty three. Would someone, uh, sorry, councillor McCray, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June twenty twenty three and July twenty twenty three Library Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, um, Deputy Mayor, councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to highlight two things, I know they've been holding scam awareness sessions, um, at the library, there was one in July. I think this is quite pertinent and would be relevant to lots of people in our community, so if you want to keep out, um, an eye out for those to see if we have any more. Um, also, it's book week this week and I understand the library had a very successful evening last night with about, um, seventy adults and children attending, so um, I wasn't actually there, but I understand a good time was had by all, so congratulations to the library staff.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, yep, oh, no, all, all those in favour? And that's carried. Eleven point six, which is the Economic Development Overview Report for July twenty twenty three, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I will, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty three Economic Development Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Uh, second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, I would, the committees have been a little bit quiet at the moment, but there's going to be a Lake Mundara Advisory Committee meeting happening again on, um, the thirty first, which I understand is next Thursday. Um, we've also put in some funding submissions, um, we're just waiting to see if we're successful with those. And that's it for me.
And, um, I think we've got a advisory committee meeting today, is that right? Do we have a advisory committee today?
No. I don't know why I thought it was today.
I think there was a Lake Mundara one initially, maybe it was for today, it has been postponed, I'm not sure if it was initially today, that could be what you're thinking of.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Through the chair, can I ask a question of the CEO?
Absolutely.
When these people are coming in, having meetings with, um, staff and it's relevant.
Sorry, who are these people?
Oh, like, here, you've got your key speaker, council representative for the Economic Development Overview Report?
So like nip on steel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Stakeholder engagement, yeah.
So when they come in and have a meeting with, um, council representatives, is it, is it policy or procedure if it's relating to a council's portfolio that they should be in- invited, or is that just up to, like, how does that happen?
Well, it depends what information they're trying to ascertain, so if, uh, you know, they generally meet with the economic development staff and they might, I might get involved or I may not, depending on what level they're looking at, but it might just be that they're seeking a range of information about the general profile of the area and we usually do that at the, you know, with the economic development people, so depending on the level of, um, the person that's coming in, like, yeah, you'd, you'd set the meeting up according to the, you know, if the chairman of a company came in, it would probably be a more higher level meeting, but if it's someone that's sort of just looking around and trying to ascertain whether Mount Isa is the right area to, to invest in, uh, it might, it might be at the economic development level.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councillors?
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, the, uh, Motorsports, uh, Committee is just still waiting for the, um, GHD final report, which is, I believe, due the end of this month. Um, and should be, should come through to council following that.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Um, that brings us to eleven point seven, which is the Community Development Overview Report for July twenty twenty three. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June twenty twenty three Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Fortune, councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yes, I would, the Isa Street Festival saw the last of our hundred year, um, events, and I just really want to congratulate the staff on what a fantastic night that was. Um, it's the best street, um, festival I think I've been to since council has been holding them. Um, and I've had so much good feedback from everyone that attended, so congratulations to that team.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, just a reminder to all the community groups and all that, that the round two of the community grants funding is open, and I think it finishes on the thirty first of August, so i- it's not too hard a application to put in. So I'd just encourage all community groups to, to get on board and, you know, try to get a little bit of funding to help their, their either event or their infrastructure. Um, we want to keep all the sports and community groups going, so this is a good opportunity for them to help themselves.
Also, can I add one more thing as well?
Sure.
The North Queensland Sports Star Awards are still open, so, um, if you can think of somebody to nominate, please get that in.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, the Sports Star Awards are already on social media and we can, we can certainly add the other item as well.
Oh, oh, are we getting a lot on the North West Star? Okay.
Have anyone read them, North West Star?
No.
Yeah, a few people do.
I do, I'm, I'm going to subscription, but we, we certainly don't want news coming out on Facebook, that's the only method of getting news, you know.
I think more people are likely to look on a council, um, Facebook post that, that is free rather than subscribe to the North West Star that's on the internet. I mean, you might get different people, but I think if you're on the internet, you know, you can look at the Facebook pa- page.
Yeah, um, what about, uh, uh, web page? Website, yeah, what, do we have it all on there as well?
Well, I could ask Lindsay, but she.
She's, she has disappeared as I asked the question, um.
Yeah.
It is on the website, because I think there, there are definitely people now who don't own Facebook now, people are jumping off Facebook for whatever reason, so there's more and more people who are using their accounts, so it's, if we're only using Facebook, it is, it is risky. And, uh, you know, we just got a, a letter yesterday, wasn't it, with a lady saying that she doesn't think we've done anything for the hundred years, and I think that the problem is that she may not be on Facebook, so she probably.
What's she got ahead in her head?
Well, the, you look at the articles that weren't in the North West Star, I guess, you know, uh, you know, in the ba- old days, the North West Star would have had front page. Well, the, you look at the articles that weren't in the North West Star, I guess, you know, uh, you know, in the back, old days, the North West Star would have had front page coverage of the. Street party, of the rodeo, of the prime minister and the premier being here for the, uh, rodeo. And now. I don't know if the North West Star know that the prime minister was hidden in Mount Isa. So this is where we need to get this paper back up and engaged with our community because it, it, it's important we have a paper. And, uh, if we ignore the paper, um, they may just close down and then we'll have nothing.
I think that ship sailed. They closed down and they left.
The star.
The star's not coming back, they're gone.
Well, we, well, they, they actually are there.
Where are they?
Online.
Oh, online, yeah, but they're not, not here to print a paper. It was just a shame that what Matt Nichols was doing, um, didn't. Like, we couldn't get another journalist here because I know that was really, really well received by the community.
Yeah, although, look, on, on, on that behalf, he asked us for funding and we, we, we really didn't give much to that. You know, so maybe that's something we can sit on.
That wasn't the issue, we did give him funding and it was profitable, but he had somewhere else that he had to be, he couldn't stay here in Mount Isa and he couldn't find staff.
He couldn't get a, he couldn't get a journalist to come here, that's why he left.
But he also said to me, you know, ten thousand that we gave him probably wasn't. Going to help that first year of trying to get off the ground. That was a conversation I had with him, you know, so. You know, I guess in the future, maybe we look at the budget, if someone does try and get something off the ground, we need to support it more the first year. And then, you know, back off as it gets more momentum.
I don't know, my business was distributing it for free for him, so, um, I thought he had a pretty good business model, really.
Yeah, well, he wasn't selling them, so I guess that's the other part, wasn't it?
The reality is that newspapers everywhere have declined significantly in.
Yeah.
Yep.
And continue to do so, yeah.
It doesn't even matter whether it's a courier model or the Australian or any printed media is just declining quite rapidly.
Yeah, but, uh, my thoughts are, we just got to make sure that we're not just real, um. Um, we're not just, um, relying on Facebook to get our message out there, so we have to figure out.
Sorry, I thought that's why we had the newsletter.
We do, we have the newsletter. Um. And we have the website and we have Facebook, so we, we probably have to look at, do we go to the bulletin, which is, do, do you sell the bulletin? I don't even know.
It doesn't come to Mount Isa anymore, no.
So the bulletin, so what printed papers come to Mount Isa?
The land, the register and the Queensland Country Life. And the racing papers.
And do they come?
Once a week.
Once a week, so do we look at perhaps putting things in those papers? Because at least once a week, someone's buying them and, um, we could have. You know, some of our tenders. Um, some, a, a, a story on a recap of what's happening, coming up maybe, because there's, maybe that's what we do.
We can have a look at it, I mean, I, I don't think the readers.
I mean, the cost is going to be too much, I mean, all, how many people aren't seeing what's going on?
Well, obviously a lot of people.
Why obviously? Because, oh, I, I didn't know about it, so have we got numbers or have we got a percentage or have we got?
You want some stats? Well, I think we've had a couple of tenders go out where. Well, but no one's put in for it or one person.
That's not the council's fault. I mean, if people can't go on a c- computer and get a tender, how's that council's fault?
That, well, it, it's getting the message out there that the tender is up. That's the problem, because there are people like myself and how many times does Kim Coghlan get on the council site and check the tenders? Or Peter McCrae or myself?
She's not in that business, that's why.
No, that's right, you are, I'm not. And you get an alert to say there's a new tender, well, a lot of businesses do who are on, um, what's it called? That local buy or?
Well, I, I just can't see how we need to go out and, I mean. To advertising the Townsville Bulletin, we, we might as well go and advertise in the Best Bets because you, you've got to have the same amount of people that are going to read it.
More people, Best Bets, I'll guarantee it.
Because, I mean. I mean, it's not cheap to advertise either.
But the council used to do that, so it's not something we're going to do that's brand new, council used to do that, yep.
Times change.
It does, but, uh, uh, again, I'm, I'm, I'm raising an issue that is a potential problem that we're relying on Facebook to get our message out there and maybe we need to look.
So how many people aren't seeing, you, you said?
Well, you tell me how many people are seeing it councillor.
Well, I don't know.
And I don't know either.
You, you brought it up and you're, you're saying a lot of our messages aren't getting out there, so.
Absolutely.
Explain to me how, so who's not seeing?
Alright, we've got two tenders, one tender no one applied for, the second tender we have one person apply for and that's because we rang them up. So that's, that's two examples. We've got a letter from a lady who believes we haven't done much for the hundred years, so now, um, we're inviting her in to show what we've done.
So we're going to go out and spend four thousand dollars a month o- o- on advertising because one person didn't see anything for the hundred years?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that. I'm, I get around the community, people ask me stuff all the time about things that I think that we're trying to sell. And it, and it's, it seems to me they're not getting the message. And if you're not on Facebook on the twenty third of July. You miss a post that might have been relevant for you. That's what I'm saying, because they don't just pop up again unless some comments on it, they just disappear down the, the, um, stream or.
Yeah, I think everyone, every organisation is having difficulty with cut through in this space and. I think it's a time where just people have to take personal responsibility if they want to find something, they need to look for it and that's, that's just the way it is, it's like that for everybody. I'm not saying it's right, it's just how it is.
I, I, I think there's nothing wrong with us, um, trying to, to spend time looking at ways to engage with our community, it's, it's really not a.
Well, yeah, but that's not, that's not what I asked. I've, I've got no problem with engaging with the community whatsoever. So, I mean, making a statement like that is just totally incorrect.
So you're saying how many people do not see our posts on Facebook, that's, that's the stat you want?
No, well, you, you, you made the statement that no pe- no one's seeing any of the tenders or, or, or any of the communication. So I'm just asking the question, well, how many is it?
I'm, I'm saying that there's a lot of people who aren't seeing our messages, whether it's a tender, whether it's advertising an event or whatever it is. There's a lot of people in the community who don't seem to see it. If they're not on Facebook, it's concerning because that's, a lot of our advertising is done on Facebook.
So when we're talking a lot, what, three hundred people, two hundred people?
Do you go out and chat to anyone councillor, do you want to just go out and ask them how, did they know about this or?
Sometimes it's, sometimes I, um.
Question, I mean, you don't need to question me.
I'm saying, the feedback I get in the.
What a stupid question. Do you think I don't?
Sorry, what was that?
Are you implying that I don't go out in the community or?
I'm saying, I go out in the community and I talk to people.
So you're implying that I don't?
I'm saying, perhaps if you want these, if you want to ga- gauge how many people know what's happening in council, that you do some community engagement.
Oh, okay.
Because I definitely talk to people.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes too, people use it as. They do know about it, but they'll come up with you and asks about it because they want to start a conversation as well. You know what I mean? Am I making sense? Yeah.
I get that, uh, but I, I honestly will have someone say. I don't hear anything from council, council's very quiet on this, and I say, really? Because I was on the radio, we put out a newsletter, we put it on Facebook.
Sometimes they're just whinging too, because they just want to.
No, I, I don't think they're whinging, I think they honestly, the, the communication's not there and, and maybe one of the things we could do is start advocating for a printed paper in Mount Isa. Maybe we get more vocal and start advocating, um, more.
I d- I definitely think we should have a printed paper here. Um, however, I don't think we should be throwing thousands and thousands of dollars at the likes of the Townsville Bulletin who basically deserted us and stopped sending a paper here.
I, I wasn't suggesting a particular paper, I'm just saying we look at what is actually printed and, and hits Mount Isa. And if it's, if there's about two or three papers once a week that come to Mount Isa, maybe we look at them. And it might even. People, once they know there's some stuff come, there'll be a lot more Mount Isa content in those papers, might actually pick them up on Saturday with their coffee and, um.
Well, that would be Queensland Country Life then or the Register.
What about the Mount Isa Mail that, that goes on? So that's not enough or?
Pardon, sorry?
Yeah.
I, I, I can't hear you?
The newsletter or the Mount Isa Mail that goes out every?
Look, that's terrific, I think that's wonderful and I, I, and I get a lot of feedback to say. I didn't, you know, if it wasn't for that newsletter, I wouldn't know what's going on at council. So, and in coupled with the councillor, a lot of those people in that room don't go on Facebook. So that, that's their only way of getting the message across is, um, is that newsletter.
Through the chair, the ABC, um, North West seems to put out a lot of information, do we send our media releases to them? That could be another good avenue as well.
I think.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, and, and, and to be honest, it's, it's. Was it one, was it Mount Isa people, was it, you know, those sort of things? Yeah, and that's, um, you probably missed the first half of the conversation because you were taking a phone call, but we're just saying. We shouldn't be relying on Facebook for our messaging and this is not, um, a shot at anyone at all, I just think that we need to investigate better ways to get our message out there.
Yeah, look, at the end of the day, we could put, we could do a quick report on the stats that we're currently getting and we can just have a look at it.
Okay, any other question? Thanks for the discussion councillors, that was good. Any other questions on this? Well, that, that's not true, we put the Alexander Oval on that, uh, pan, on that tender process. And we, the first time we got no one in, interested because we were really targeting sports and a lot of sports weren't on, um. The tender process, they're not on vendor panel, they're not on local buy, so that's a missed opportunity there, but so. Uh, and I think we, we had to re- advertise that a second time. And the same happened with the international club, you know, we put it out and no one knew it was up there, that would have been interested, the, the, a lot of the, the, the groups. Because they're, they're not interested in tenders because they're more, you know, sports orientated. What processes are you referring to though councillor? Because I'm not aware of them. So i- i- if a sport is not on local buy, how do they get to know that that's up for tender? Well, I think.
Surely if you're not on a local buy, and, and I mean, if you had an interest in. You know, the, uh, the Oval or the club or, I mean, if you had an interest, wouldn't you pursue it? I mean, wouldn't you, w- w- why would you just sit back in your house and wait for something to come out?
Well, we've been sitting on a couple of those for a couple of years, so, and we, and we, I think councillor Coghlan said that one of the sports wrote to us. But because they didn't put in for the tender, they didn't, they didn't, um, weren't considered, so they didn't, they didn't understand that they needed to do. Find the tender and, is that right councillor Coghlan?
They, they didn't even get a reply from council.
So I guess that's just showing a gap and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but it's good to, to, to look at better ways to do things and get the message out there. Yeah, and I think a couple of those tenders, we didn't even put them on Facebook, so that's where something fell down there and it's. Yep. Yeah, and, and that's where there was a gap, so, and, and I liked your idea about radio, I don't think we, we advertise on radio, but maybe that's another medium we could look at. Do we? Well, what, what do we, what do we advertise on? And funding, okay.
As I said, I think it, I think we're better off just getting some stats and then you can have a discussion about it once the stats are provided.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Through the chair, look, I, I, I really think we just need to continue and embrace the digital age because, um, you know, everywhere you look with printed stuff, um. There's very few take up, um, people taking it up, I, I see even the, um. Some of the airlines are not putting in their magazines in the back of the pockets of the chairs anymore, people just don't read them because they're always online with their. With their, um, telephones or iPads or whatever and, um. So I think, um, and, and actually the next item in the agenda is about a digital display board from one of the businesses. In town and, you know, I, I think that's, that's the kind of stuff that we need to be embracing and I'm not saying that's the only thing, but. We certainly do need to ramp up the social media in whatever aspects we can, um, have a look at. Um, how they might be, um, be able to get our messages out to everybody and also to look at what, what sort of digital stuff we can. Operate in town at a reasonable cost, um, and not too much ongoing costs. With it, um, because I, I just don't think we should be going down the road of printed, printed press any more than we're doing, you know?
A- again though, um, if you put something on Facebook, it goes onto a feed, so say, I'm just picking a date, twenty third of July, we put up a, a Facebook post. You didn't get on Facebook on that date, you won't see it unless you actually jump on our Facebook page and then go down the feed and, and have a look at what we've done in the last few weeks.
Hmm.
So how do you, how do you mitigate that? Because getting the word out there, someone might be on Facebook once a week, three times a week.
There are other ways through Facebook, you can actually pay, um, for ads to go out, you can also. Lodge, lodge events on there and things like that and they get, they get exposed a lot more than just a, a daily feed. There's quite a number of ways with social media and Facebook isn't the only means of social media either, there, there are a number of them now that are quite popular. And, and I mean, I'm not familiar with how much we're using, um, Lindsay might be able to give us an update on that, but I, I do think we should be embracing. The digital, um, marketing and, and advertising a lot more than probably what we're doing. Um, so there's probably avenues for us to have a look at that a bit more closely.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, I, I, I just think we'd be wasting, I agree with some of the comments by council, I think we're just wasting our time pushing. Pushing for, um, printed press anymore because people just don't read them. Even the airports don't have the courier mails where they used to give them out once for free, you know, now the, you, you can't ask. People aren't picking them up to read a full newspaper anymore, it's just not, it's just not the habit of people, it's, it's all about, um, it's all about online and digital reading.
Yeah, and, and like I said, uh, we just need to, um, explore, I'm not so, I've never said let's turn our back on digital. But definitely we have to go with the times, there's no doubt about that, but having, um, exploring the best ways to get our message out there. And I did like your idea of paying for Facebook ads. Because, you know, otherwise it goes on a feed and it's never seen again, but if you pay for that ad. Then it pops up everywhere for a few weeks, which might be, uh, a, a good idea, I don't know, maybe. Yep. Okay, so that could be an option we could discuss anyway, alright. Any other comments before we vote on this?
Yeah, a couple of things I'd just like to raise, madam mayor, we, um. Uh, Mount Isa City's a welcoming city, we're registered with, uh, Welcoming Australia and, um. As part of that, we're, um, welcoming week's coming up next month. And, uh, I don't know where they get the days from, but the welcoming week is actually from the eighth of September to the seventeenth of September. Um, so we, um, planning, councillor McCrae himself, are organising with, um, through the CEO and the. And the promotional development thing to hold a, uh, a small event recognizing that, um, so that's, that's in, in process now. So I just wanted to raise that, everyone will get invites to that, to that event, um. Uh, which we'd look like holding at the neighbourhood centre at the moment, so, um, we'll just, uh, continue on that. Um, and the other thing I wanted to raise, there's a, a group, uh, from the Healing Foundation, which is an Australian indigenous. Foundation, uh, funded by the Australian Government, I believe, but, uh, they're, they're looking at holding a, uh, what they call a healing forum for indigenous communities in Mount Isa. Later in the year, um, and that's, um, well advanced now as well, so, um. They'll be planning for a rather large, uh, event to, um, have a look at, it's, uh, it's, it's like a reconciliation activity and also, uh, an activity where. Um, indigenous people in the community can be heard about, um, what their needs are and, and those sorts of things and, um. And they look like, uh, getting some direction out of that, uh, forum later in the year to, to, um, advance, um. Uh, the support for the indigenous community in the local region, so I'll just, uh, just make council aware of that. So I'll just, just make council aware of that please.
When's that on councillor?
They're forming up the dates now, but they're looking early November.
Okay.
Yeah, for holding a, a large forum. And I believe they spoke with Brian from the promotional team yesterday about the hire of, of a facility to actually hold the forum.
And is, is that local or where are they from?
It's local, yeah. It's, yeah, it's driven by all the local Indigenous leaders.
Is that the Thriving Communities Group that we've established? Is that the Calcan PBC?
No, it's not primarily. It's, it's all Indigenous people that are in the community.
Is it that DS, that's it? Whatever the acronym is.
It's a group called Healing Foundation. They've done this around Australia in a few places.
Ah, okay.
So they're, they're available on the website if you, if you want to just research them a bit. And they had a couple of representatives here yesterday who are facilitating a, a small workshop to, just to plan the forum for later in the year.
No problem, that's, thank you for that, that's good to know. Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to item 11.7, which is a community development overview report for July 2023.
That's what we just did.
We just did that.
We're up to 11.8 operational works.
11.8, which is operational works application for digital billboard sign at 41 to 43 Simpson Street, describes as lot two on plan SP158996. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll move the recommendation that council approves the development application for operational works for the proposed digital billboard and the two existing signs at 41 to 43 Simpson Street, described as lot two on plan SP158996, subject to the following conditions.
I don't think you have to read all the conditions councillor.
For yours?
I don't think you have to read all.
No, I just was going to say, as listed, number.
I want to hear a read of.
One to nine.
We're on a strict timeframe.
Well, poor deputy mayor has to read them out all the time, so. He does and he just chooses to.
Maybe.
All right, so can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I'm just glad I didn't have to read out all the things.
I'll say something, this is for the digital billboards. I, I see them all over the place in different towns. They don't seem to cause any major dramas with traffic, so happy to support the motion. Bring us into the 21st century.
Any other comments?
No, I'd support the motion. Madam Mayor, I think it's good to see something like this happening. And as we were talking about in the last item, you know, I think this is the way to go with digital advertising like this nowadays. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to item 11.9, which is a request for variation for the Mites Gala Dinner. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council approves a variation to the approved funding received by Mount Isa Townsville Economic Development Zone Incorporated to host a gala dinner on the 18th of September 2023.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you. Any comments on this one or?
Yeah, I'm just a bit curious about this one because initially we supported this because it was supposed to be out at the lake, a gala dinner showcasing that area for the 100 years and networking. So we've had a variation of date and we've had a variation of location. So yeah, I'm just curious.
It is going to be held in conjunction with the Australian Mining Cities Association as well. Members of that are probably going to attend the dinner as well. And I think it's linking in with the Miners Memorial.
Yeah, so the Miners Memorial is on the Tuesday, the 19th. So we'll have quite a few people coming from different industries and mines all around Queensland. So it might, it's actually probably fantastic to have all those people in the room at a dinner.
I think councillor McCrae's just referring to the change in location as well as the date. But I'm not sure of the logistics of why that happened either. But I guess it's probably up to us just to do.
Yeah, I think there was something to do with legal licensing, but I don't really, I don't have the, all the information either.
Like I think initially we were happy to support that because it would be expensive to put on an event out at the lake. Whereas now it's, I think moved to the IBIS and it's just a normal dinner. Anyway, it'll still be a good event, no doubt.
Can I, any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that brings us to item 11.10, which is the R A D F Out of Realms Application, Mount Isa Council of Christian Churches. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that council endorses the Regional Last Development Fund, the R A D F Committee Recommendation to Approve Funding to the Mount Isa Council of Christian Churches Project 100 Years Centenary History of Christian Churches in the amount of $4,470 plus GST.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, madam mayor, so the Council of Christian Churches had produced a book similar to this in the, for the 75th centenary. And they thought it was appropriate to, to develop another book for their congregations and the people in the community and link it to the 100 years. And wherever I've sort of raised this or spoken to people about it, it's been very well received. So I think I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that brings us to item 11.11, the annual report for 2223 Environmental Charge Projects. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council approves the annual report 202223 Environmental Charge Projects as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, this, this is just the different environmental projects that council supports from our environmental levy. So that includes things like the Free Plants Day, the Environmental Grants Programme, the Water Conservation Campaign, the Energy Efficiency Strategy, the Biodiversity Strategy, our tree planting. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you councillor McCrae, any other comments?
Can I just ask through the, through the chair, I don't know whether I'm reading it right or not, the Environmental Grants Programme, are we doing that, is that going to be a once a year, once a year thing?
That's councillor Streton's portfolio, I'm not, I'm not sure how often a year that's going to be.
Yeah, I can, I can provide an update on that. So every year, the Environmental Services Team and the portfolio councillor will meet and discuss the next upcoming projects for the environmental, funded from the Environmental Charge Levy. So, and then we produce a report that comes to council to adopt those projects. So that's due to happen for FY24.
Through the chair, look, I think this is a pretty exciting strategy and, you know, a, a schedule of activities for the environmental charge. So I think, you know, it's, if we can get most of that done during the year, I think it will be, you know, the place will be a lot better off. So full marks to the committee that's pulling all this together.
Thanks deputy mayor. And I brought this up in the informal briefing, but I'll just bring it up in the ordinary meeting. But with the Native Trees Day, you know, it would be fantastic if we could look at grass. And I'm not sure if it's grass seeds or how we, but just trying to get people to not only plant trees, but also to establish lawns is really important in Mount Isa with lead, which is in the city. Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 11.12, which is the Competitive Neutrality Complaint Management Policy. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, madam mayor, that council adopts a competitive neutrality complaint management policy version two as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thanks councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Madam Mayor, this is, the policy's been developed under section 48 of the Local Government Act 2009 about how council will deal with complaints and manage those complaints in relation to complaints from the community in terms of us, you know, conducting activities that may be seen to be competing with businesses or, or other ventures in town. So this is, gives us a policy on, on how to, how to deal with that.
Thank you. Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that now takes us to item 12, which is Infrastructure Services Reports. And 12.1, which is Major Projects Overview Report for July 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? I think it's councillor Tully.
Thank you, madam mayor. The council receives and notes the July 2023 Major Projects Overview Report.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just a few of the projects, the capital projects that we are undergoing at the moment is the MRF, which is the Material Recovery Facility. It's early works, a complete site office and containers relocated. An excavation has started, is now underway. The Lions Basketball Court is complete. Centennial Place is 77% complete. Just a query on that, is Centennial Place, is that the one, the old Harvey Norman? So is that 77, is that 77% complete? Or I, I probably like to question that.
Stephen, can you grab the microphone, sorry?
A lot of it, of course, you can't see because there's extensive services underground, all the power and CCTV, all sorts of things underground, but the toilet is there. If you go past now, it's actually starting to take shape. The steel structures are there for the, the water wall, the, all the pipe work for the, water is, is in. Concrete seats are all built around the, what I'm calling the oval. There's slabs installed. And that, that represents the, the total number of things, the cost value of things, et cetera. So it's been sort of weighted up and said 77%, but it is taking place very quickly now. It's literally starting to jump out of the ground after being a construction site for so long. So, and the, and the shape of it, if you now go down there, we did actually have year eight from Spinifex College come in on Friday and have a presentation on it. Then they took plans down there and went and had a look and they could actually look at the plan and go, aha, I get it. So it's really, really is taking shape. The containers are, sorry, the containers are all done, they're painted up, they're just ready to be dropped on, on site towards the finish.
Okay, thanks Stephen.
So through the chair, can I ask either the CEO or the engineer? So the family fun park's not on there anymore because that was, that was finished. And then we were going to fix up some of the jobs that weren't, weren't finalized by the contractors? Is that correct?
It, it's reached practical completion, so we're into the last 5%, which is dragging on and on. And there's defects, the, the water bucket, the tipping water bucket developed a leak. It was titled split, but I think it was on in bolt, came loose, fixed that up. We've had issues with the chlorinator, fixed that up. The rope bridge, the ropes have become slightly slack, so they need to be fixed up. But they're all rats and mice stuff and we've had some issues with some of the soft foil. Few areas have broken out, so that'll be patched up. But we, you know, it is completely operational, but we're still working through some minor defects.
And have, has anything been done with having like someone permanent down there to do parks and gardens and clean up regularly, like every day?
Yeah, we do, it is serviced every day, but we intend to appoint a caretaker for the precinct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we are on to that?
Yes.
Right.
Any other questions councillors?
The basketball court, did we need to fix that? I see that on Facebook that that's broken again.
Yeah, I finally got the, the, the final backboards installed with the netball on one side, basketball on the other side. But within a week, someone had smashed the rings off the, off those. It's disappointing, they're heavier duty than the, than the interim one. The lines have all been marked, so that is also complete, but it's going to be an ongoing issue managing the vandalism. And we'll get about 20 heavy duty rings in stock to replace them as people break them, I guess.
It is very disappointing. And did we put bollards around there so they can't be driven on anymore?
Not, not yet, we're in the process of doing that, yeah.
Thank you. And CCTV cameras, are we going to put some up?
There are no CCTV cameras down there yet, but we'll investigate putting them in. There's no, no power, so it'll have to be solar or something like that.
Yeah, because it, it might be a deterrent, or if not a deterrent, at least we catch whoever's doing it. Any other questions councillors?
Madam Mayor, I note the Camberwell aerodrome upgrades down there and there's some technical work scheduled for end of August. Have we resolved to go ahead with that job?
It's in the programme, we've not, not resolved to go ahead. So this is preliminary work. So we said we need to keep doing that until such time as we can resolve whether we're going to undertake the, the complete works or whether we're going to get perhaps more funding or try and pass it off to somebody else. I didn't want to stop completely because theoretically the works are due to be completed by April next year. So what we're doing now is fairly minor, $40,000, something like that.
Thanks.
And this will determine how much work needs to be done if we extend this strip.
Yeah, thanks director. Because at the moment it's sitting at a significant outlay by council to actually, to see that job through. And is there any applications in for funding to try and reduce some of that?
Not on top of the original. Of the 1.9, I think we've got about 50%, about a million dollars.
That's my understanding.
So it's still a significant expenditure by council, so we'll try and leverage that if we're to go ahead.
Yeah, so yeah, so at the moment we don't have any other avenues to source funding for that?
Not at the present, no.
Maybe, I don't know, we able to do some research?
Well, there's, there's fairly limited grants for airports, but we do, they do come up from time to time. But I think the next round is probably likely to be March or April next year, I think. But we can have a look.
Yeah, it's, it's a significant outlay for council, our size, I think, for an airport that's.
Well, who uses it?
Pardon?
Who uses it?
Well, that's, that's, I guess, where I'm going, you know, is it, you know.
Well, I mean, I thought we'd already brought this up at several meetings that we need to, you know, we need, I mean, it's, well, my opinion is a waste of money. Complete waste of money of spending that money on an aerodrome that gets used by one, one person or one company. And, and there's no reason why the flying doctor can't land on the, on the road. I mean, if they need to go there, I mean, just have the police block the road off and land, land on the road.
Yeah, they do, we're, that's right. I'm, I'm of the view, you know, I think it hasn't been resolved to go ahead with probably for those reasons that you're talking about.
Well, it's been in the, I mean, this was back in the previous term before us. And councillor Streton and I, I mean, disagreed with them. And I mean, my view hasn't changed, so. Yeah, I'm not too sure what the geotechnical works, what's that for Steve?
The, the works are to extend the runway and to make the pavement suitable for larger planes. And that's so that the RFDs, and I'm not sure what model of aircraft, but they want to use aircraft that can go from Camberwell to Brisbane without refuelling. So they need a bigger aircraft than they're currently utilizing, which means they need a longer strip capable of taking it.
Maybe the flying doctor should pay for it.
Is there, is there an opportunity to get more funding? I know we've got $1 million of funding. Is there, um, is there an opportunity to get more funding? I know we've got one million dollars of funding. There's a million dollar bill to council. Is there an opportunity to get any other funding to offset that million dollar bill to council?
Not as far as I'm aware, but we can make inquiries.
I think that's the part that hurts, it's the million dollars from, that pays money.
I think maybe some lobbying from us. Worthwhile too, um, yeah, because as I say, we don't know, I mean, we do own the airport, but it's a significant upgrade for...
Well, I mean, we've got the RACQ chopper, I mean, that can go and pick people up, come to Mount Isa and then the plane can go from here. I mean, how's that difficult? And why do they need a, a big, long runway? It's just my opinion.
Uh, it, it'd be interesting to, um, look at what funding is up at the moment and if that fits in, in any of those funding, because if we could offset that million dollars, then happy, I'm happy to do it. If we could get another big, all of that initial million. Any other questions councillors?
So just, uh, out of that, I, I think we do need some actions because, um, I, I, yeah, it's hard to support the way it is, you know, um, going forward. Um, for all the reasons that councillor Tully's outlined.
That was the first I'd heard of the, the runway getting extended though. How long's that been?
That's what the project was about, extending the, extending the runway. Well, that's, the upgrade is extending it.
Yeah, well, I just thought the surface wasn't good or something?
Uh, there's a few issues there too, but that's not where most of the money's going, most of the money's going the extension.
Thanks Steve.
So, so I think if we can get an action out of that to, to do some lobbying, however, whatever shape that might take.
Um, well, I think, um, if we could just go back to, um, finding out what funding is up at the moment or is coming up and if that sits on, might sit under any of that, because if it does, let's get in, let's put up a, if we can get some... I think we could put up a good case to have that. Was it federal where we got that funded from, the million dollars? I think it was federal.
Yes, it's federal.
And maybe we'll just look at where...
Wasn't it eight hundred?
Pardon?
I thought it was only eight hundred, was it a million?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'd have to check the exact dollars.
It was fifty fifty.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was fifty fifty, which would make it nine fifty.
Yeah, so whatever, whatever they put up, we're putting up, we're matching. So, and it doesn't mean we can't get funding from some other, where, and that, there are a lot of things opening up at the moment for funding, so I guess we see if we can find a match. That would be, uh, I, I'd like to go down that road first of all. Okay.
Yep.
All those in favor? And that's carried. That takes us now to item twelve point two, which is the water and sewage overview report for June and July for twenty twenty-three. Um, councillor Tully, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Love to. Uh, the recommendation is that council receive and accept the water and sewage overview report for June twenty twenty-three and July twenty twenty-three as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second of for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, yeah, just a, a slight overview, the main replacement program came to an end in June twenty twenty-three with final works carried out on Moorsby, Finchaven and Laye Streets. And the concrete and driveway repairs, which were, um, damaged through this replacement program was completed in July. A new chlorinator was installed in Reservoir One. Uh, the smart meters, installation of twenty mil residential water meters is continuing with work concentrating on the difficult-to-access properties. And as of the ninth of August twenty twenty-three, five thousand six hundred and fifty meters have been installed. Uh, yeah, well done.
Uh, any other comments councillors? None? All right, all those in favor? Councillor Coghlan?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, and that's carried. And that brings us to item twelve point three, which is the wastewater overview report for July twenty twenty-three. Is this yours again councillor Tully?
No, it's councillor Stretton's actually, but I'll, I'll, I'll do it because, I mean, he doesn't seem to be here very often. Um, the recommendation is that council receive and accept the July twenty twenty-three waste management overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second of for that motion?
Second, Bowick.
Thank you. And councillor Tully, do you want to have a chat about this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During July, work commenced on the new material recycling facility, as I mentioned previously, at the waste management facility. Escavation and levelling on the site is well underway. Um, notices have been placed for the, in place at the gatehouse and Way, Waybridge, advertising that cash will no longer be accepted from the first of the September twenty twenty-three. The takings are minimum, usually less than two hundred dollars per day and sometimes less than ten dollars per, per day. Nevertheless, the taking and handling of cash requires reconciliations to be completed and banking to be conducted. This is not economical to the council, given the small amounts involved. Thank you.
Through the chair, um, I know this is only a, a, a report, but I, I won't be, um, voting for it because I, I just don't agree with going cashless out at the waste management facility. Um, I do believe if it's only a little amount, and surely it's not that big a job, I think people should be able to have the choice of either paying by card or paying by cash.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Any other comments on this one?
Uh, just on that point, um, Madam Mayor, um, I, I think, uh, Lindsay, do we, um, or through the CEO, do we, um, we did some Facebook advertising around the cashless? No.
We haven't implemented it yet.
No, we should.
We have, we have put a sign up though, and there has been lots of chatter on Facebook and people are not happy about it. And I can fully understand it, I understand it is a cost to us to go and do the banking, but surely if it's a small amount, we could just write it in a book and bank it once a week.
No, I, I agree with it, so.
My, my view is that if, as long as we can advertise it to the public, um, a bit more, um, that, you know, I'm happy to support it. Otherwise, I think it's a way in the world, so I don't think it's a real issue.
You go ahead councillor. Thank you councillor. Any other comments? Um, and I, I personally believe that there should be a choice and why I do understand what, what, what's being put forward here and the reasons why, um, if you, I, I think you should be able to just pay with cash and whether that is coming into council here and arranging to be paid up by cash and then being able to go out and dump. But there has to be a, a way that we can work so that people can pay with cash. I, I, I think we, I do know people who don't have cards, believe it or not, so that's, they will be impacted. All right, is anyone ever with that?
No, I get, I, my only comment is I guess it's our job to try and make things easier for the community rather than the community make it easier for us, so I just think we should, we should offer both.
All right, so with that, all those in favor? And that's the deputy mayor and councillor Tully against?
Can I have my name noted please too?
Can I just call a division please? And that, that motion fails.
Um, Madam Mayor, could I just, um, just, I don't know if it's a point of order or whatever, but, um, I mean, the, the motion was to accept the waste management overview report. And while there's an item in there, that's probably not favorable to council by the sound of it. I don't know that we shouldn't pass the report and bring it back to, um, perhaps council to discuss this a bit further or just accept that it's not going to go ahead.
Through, through the chair, if we could just say, the, the motion is about receiving the report. If, if, uh, something in the report, E.G. the FPOS, um, is not supported by council, I think you should move a separate motion specifically addressing that.
Thank you. Um, one of the councillors like to move a...
You're going to have to rescind the motion.
No, no.
No, you haven't, look, you probably haven't accepted the report, but it's a portion of the report that's not accepted. So you probably do need, I think you probably need a separate motion.
So, so you could, you could put a motion forward saying that council receives and accepts the water and sewage overview report for June and July as presented, um, but, you know, does not agree with going cashless at the waste management facility or something like that. So councillor McCray, if you want to have a go at it?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-three waste management overview report as presented. However, um, we would like to move that council, um, continues to receive cash at, or card at the waste management facility.
I would second that.
Thank, thank you councillor McCray, thank you councillor Cog- Coghlan. Any other discussion before we vote?
Um, I want to accept the report, but I don't want to accept the second motion, so we separate those.
You just vote again.
You just vote again.
I don't want to go to vote against the report, I think most of the report's fine, you know, so. That was my point earlier, we, it needs to be, um, pulled out of there, I think, or, or an item, you know, addressed around that, yeah.
We've got a motion on the board.
Well, the report will still get accepted either way.
Well, no, I, I've only got a choice to vote.
Oh, I know what he's saying.
He agrees with the, the report.
The report's still going to get accepted either way.
Yeah, the only other thing we could do is, uh, not vote for that motion and vote for a motion that says that we accept the report and we would like to, um, council officers to bring a new motion or a new report to council on cashing card for the waste.
So all you're accepting is that the materials recycling facility and waste management, um, is well underway? That's all that's in the report, other than the cash component?
Well, that's the bulk of the report, is the table.
So we do have a motion on...
The report on the waste.
We do have a motion on the table, so we, we do need to vote and if this, if the, uh, it, then we can make some decisions on if, if, if...
Well, I'd move to amend the motion and, Madam Mayor, and, um, uh, if we could before we vote, please, um, to take that out and, and have that dealt with some other way.
I think we have to vote on this motion, i- if...
You can't amend a motion.
He can, he can amend a motion. He can put a, he can put an amendment to the motion up and then the amendment gets voted on and then if it gets passed, it becomes a motion and then you vote on the motion.
A lot of motions happening in the room today.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table, uh, councillor, you want to amend it? Let's hear it.
So, um, I'll, I'll amend the motion that we, we just deal with the report and, um, we, we move to, uh, um, have a separate discussion about the, um, the cash at the tip.
Okay, any, a second of for that motion, amended motion.
We're going to have to rescind what we already voted on when we...
No, I think what he's...
No, so I don't, I don't agree with what you've just said.
Well, you vote against it.
So we vote against it, so if that amendment doesn't come up, then we go back to the original motion, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second of for the amended motion? Okay, that motion fails for lack of a second, uh, councillor. Um, that brings us back to the motion that's on the table of councillor McCray, um, all those in favor? And against? Um, can I call a division on that please?
Yep.
Thank you, and that's carried. It's going to be a long meeting today.
That one's set pretty quick.
All right, that takes us to twelve point three, which is the... Um, where are we?
Twelve point five.
Twelve point...
No, four.
Four, sorry.
Sorry, four.
Okay, so that takes us to twelve point four, which is the waste fees and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that, uh, council, um, A, no longer provide the following services, hire of commercial wheelie and bulk bins, hire of domestic bulk bins, water analysis, and B, increase the fees for tyre disposal to councils, cost to recycle plus twenty percent.
Can I get a second of for that motion?
Seconded Coghlan.
Uh, thanks councillor Coghlan. Uh, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, look, uh, the, um, the amendments here, uh, follow on from, um, the fees and charges that were adopted by council in twenty-ninth of June. Um, however, uh, there's a number of things that are becoming obsolete because of the transfer of the collection services to J.J. Richards. And, um, also, uh, our research has discovered that, um, the tyre recycling, um, per type of tyre needs to be adjusted so that council don't suffer a loss on every transaction. Um, so that covers off on the, um, on the increases there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments councillors?
Can I, can I just ask the question, the plus twenty percent, is that to cover wages and the actual processing? Is that what that's about? Because we have in the past had a really bad, um, problem with people dumping tyres, so it's probably in our best interest to keep it as low as we can.
The twenty percent is a, is a margin, so to speak, for administrative, uh, costs and that. So we'd be passing on the charge and adding twenty percent to cover our costs for receiving it, um, engaging with, um, the tyre cycle, paying their invoices, et cetera. So we, generally speaking, most of our charges, we put a twenty or twenty-five percent margin on whatever it costs us if we're providing it to the public.
I was just wondering what was actually calculated.
Uh, not, not a calculation, just keeping with the, um, accepted margin that we apply elsewhere.
And I guess just, just for those who haven't got the report in front of them on the live stream, the passenger tyre is now suggested at ten dollars fifty, a light truck four by four is twenty dollars, a truck tyre is forty-six dollars fifty and a motorcycle tyre is ten dollars fifty. So the only one that's probably more impacted is the truck tyre, the others are like a two dollar increase, sort of? Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, that takes us to twelve point five, which is the aquaplex facility design and construction tender, RFT twenty twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Uh, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council award and accepts the tender RFT two oh two three oh two five of Swimplex Aquatics Proprietary Limited for one million three hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and delegates authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate, finalize and enter into the contract.
Can I get a second of for that motion? Councillor Tully, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This, uh, is, um, a project that we've had some funding, received some funding for. However, um, after some, um, concentrated, um, uh, research and, and, um, consideration, council, um, is now looking at providing a, uh, a, uh, very nice unit, um, in the aquatic center down there, which, um, I'm just trying to find the description of it, uh... Yeah, subsequent discussions at council, uh, led to some scope changes. The scope, um, dispensed with some of the smaller play features in exchange for a taller tower, a more exciting slide layout, um, which I, I believe that the, um, the tower is now an eight meter tower with a dual slide, one slide being an enclosed tunnel while the second is a half-pipe. Um, and this, um... Um, and this, um, this will provide a significant point of difference to many other slides in the region. Thank you.
Any comments, councillors?
I've got a bit of concern about this one because I, I feel this is going to blow out to a lot more than, we're going to have to put a lot more in than six hundred and ten thousand.
It's two hundred thousand.
We just added a further six hundred and ten thousand to deliver the nominated. Council will need to supplement this with a further six hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Am I correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, not two hundred.
Yeah. So, so our, our contribution was three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So it increases it by two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So initially, we put in for a design for a water slide that was the same as Concurry. And that's obviously increased in ti- in time. So we were always putting an extra four hundred thousand to it. So on, on, now we're going to something a lot bigger and better. And it's going to cost approximately an extra two hundred thousand. So we were always up for that four hundred thousand contribution that was something we'd agreed to. And now we're, we're agreeing to an extra two hundred thousand to get something bigger and better and a point of difference between us and Concurry. So something, this thing will be a lot bigger, a, a lot more fun and engage a lot of, probably have a little bit older age group than the little kids.
Yeah, my only concern is it's, it's going to end up more. Because they'll come back and need to have more money, because they always do.
Through the chair, look, I, I, I don't think with this particular project, it's a complex project. I think most of the stuff spilled off site and popped in. I, I don't believe that there'd be any significant, um, blowouts to this. I, I wouldn't think so anyway. Probably ask the director to comment on that.
The majority of the cost is the supply of the equipment. Uh, they've put a lot of these in before, so they're well versed in it. Wouldn't expect to find foundation issues, for example, like the basketball court, there's an area there. Uh, we've got the designs for the connecting the, the water, so that, that's all known. It's not going to get any further away or deeper or change. It'll be connected to the existing pumps, so it's a fairly simple matter of installing some pipework, concrete, um, pad or around the, the slide and, uh, and, and the slide itself. So any variations would need to be, either variations of scope that we, uh, initiate or that had to be something unknown and unusual to, uh, trigger a variation from the contractor.
So are we managing that ourselves or is, are we getting contracted to project manage it?
We'll be project managing ourselves, but it, all the installation is done by the contractor, a single contractor. Um, one of the, the main things that, that leads to problems and variations is always foundations. So when you start digging things up, well, there's not, um, significant foundation works here. So I'm not expecting any blowouts or great changes.
And last but not least question, Stephen, when do we, when could we expect this to be in full operation?
February.
Okay.
It says March, isn't it? I'll probably leave it at March.
It's in February, didn't it?
It says March twenty twenty-four.
All right, well, do your best to get it in as A.S.O.P.
We'll, we'll do our best. It'd be great to have it in by, by Christmas and all the rest of it. Kids use it over Christmas holidays. But we, uh, we should have ordered it a, a month ago to achieve that. A- a- again, as with most of these things, the, uh, supply of materials and equipment will be the, the biggest, um, factor in that. Uh, all this equipment's manufactured overseas and they will order it and bring it in. So that's the most likely delay we'll, we'll have. But if we, uh, if things go well and doesn't get caught up in customs or anything and the, uh, works on site are relatively simple.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. All right, if, uh, everyone's happy to go along, um, all those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us now to the N.R.M.A. E.V. charging site in Mount Isa. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council provides a non-binding letter of intent to N.R.M.A. agreeing to the installation of an E.V. charging station in Camerwell Street.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thanks councillor Tully. Uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This is the, uh, second potential, um, electric vehicle charging station in the country, uh, sorry, in the city. Um, that's, uh, you know, planning to, um, take up, uh, you know, provide the service to people that will be travelling in electric vehicles at some point in the future. Um, and as we're, probably should all be aware is that, um, the net zero economy is starting to approach. It's now at a rate of knots. Um, and by two thousand and thirty, we, we should see a, a large increase in these vehicles. So, um, uh, the, the site is, uh, picked at Camerwell Street is adjacent to the, the Buffalo Club and close to McDonald's, which allows people to go off and have a coffee or a soft drink or something or, or do something while their, um, while their vehicle's being charged for whatever, uh, period of time it takes. Um, and I think, um, it'll activate that part of the street a little bit, a little bit more, um, which is quite quiet at the moment with, um, bunnies having left the, left the area. Um, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Stephen, do you have an update on the, um, you, you dropped off a flyer to the businesses in the area. Did we get any feedback from that flyer?
There was an email about that.
Yeah, there was an email last morning, or yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, so I did drop off a flyer and spoke to, to people. Uh, I would summarise it to say it's either indifference or enthusiasm. Nobody I spoke to suggested it was going to be a problem. Um, there was a couple, especially actually the, um, the, the vape store down in, uh, um, Mile Street, he thought it was the best idea ever. Councilor should be congratulated, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, he was very enthusiastic. Wasn't, wasn't fussed where it went, just we needed them. Uh, I was probably a little bit surprised at a, at a couple of others, I thought, who would perhaps benefit and be enthusiastic. Were rather indifferent, but they didn't oppose it. They were just indifferent to the, the sites and the concept. So, um, certainly nobody opposed it at all, so.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. And I, and I realise it was an email, but obviously we only see that email. So it's good for Stephen to report on it, so it's on the live stream, that people can hear that there was engagement and people did or, or didn't choose not to engage on, on that. Is there any questions, councillors, on this?
Um, yeah, I'd still prefer to see it at Centennial Place. I think if people are stopping there, it activates the space more. It's our own facility. I think it might encourage people to stop there, walk up, grab a coffee at a local shop or go into One Out West there and have a look around. Um, yeah, that's my preference, I've spotted.
I'm not supporting the motion. I think it should be at, um, Centennial Place.
Any other comments, councillors?
But isn't that where the, the X is parked?
That's just one option. They haven't gone with that option. They've gone with the one down below.
Oh.
The issue with, um, through the chair is with, um, Centennial Place is that it, uh, it's not an easy place to get in and out of, in my view. Um, I think Camerwell Street provides a lot better options for people, but also after about lunchtime, it gets pretty quiet in Mile Street in terms of cafes and those sorts of things. Whereas, um, if people are parking there and charging from lunchtime on, you know, through to the evening, ours, at least, they've got the Buffalo Club close by and McDonald's just around the corner. I think there's options open for them, a lot more options open for them at that point.
I guess it's a case of what comes first, the chicken or the egg. If there's probably more people around wanting after two, then they might stay open also.
Well, that's speculative, councillor. I would suggest, yeah. Thanks.
I, I guess my thoughts are this is going to be one of many. So we've got one now at our back at Isa. We're proposing another one, but as I see it, we may end up with seven stations at the, in the next couple of years. So, uh, it's good to have, um, I think in the informal briefing, we had, uh, quite a few areas identified and then we narrowed them down to two. And, uh, at the special council meeting, that's why I think we decided just to look at those two particular ones. But there's no doubt that, um, in the future, I see quite a few of these recharging stations around the city.
Just to reiterate what I did bring up at the workshop, but we do need feedback from the company to how much usage they are getting. Because there's no good putting up a heap if the usage isn't there, because they're not actually very pretty to look at.
That's right, but, you know, they're, they're looking at it in the next ten to twenty years, not having petrol-driven cars.
Yeah, well.
So, so we need to get ahead of it and, and be proactive, then be reactive when, when it's an urgency.
So I would like to see that report from the company.
Is that possible, Stephen? Can we get a report on?
We, we can ask.
So how much do you pay for these things? I, I mean.
I think it's credit card and I don't know. I don't own electric car, so.
How much, sorry, what's your question?
How much do you?
Well, how, how much they charge to, to plug it in?
I don't know, Stephen. I think it's.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Uh, chat says it's about three dollars a, a fill, so.
Oh, wow.
I guess you need an electric car and do it once or twice to, to know.
Well, I mean, they're never going to get rid of petrol cars.
And, and one of the things that, um, is great is that these recharging stations now will, uh, all across the Overlander's Way and also the Matilda's Way. So it's going to open up our region to electric cars, which is fantastic. And I guess, would we consider Camerwell? It'd be probably one of the next conversations.
There was one on the list, remember?
I think that.
We already talked about that.
N.R.M.A. have planned to put one in there in the first half of next year, Camerwell.
And I guess the, um, this beckons where it goes from there. Any other discussion before we vote, councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Do, would you like?
Against, can I have my noted, please?
Me too.
A division, please? Okay, so that takes us to, uh, general business, which is nil. And now we are going to, um, uh, we will be moving into, um, confidential business items. So, uh, councillors, I would, uh, like to break for ten minutes, um, before we enter into confidential. If that's okay. So our, our time is eleven oh four and I'll, I'll be adjourning for ten minutes. That council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the Local Government Regulation for 2012. Fourteen point one, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment zero seven one nine six double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section two five four J D of the local government regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. Fourteen point two, acquisition of property, assessment number zero three nine five two double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the local government regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter is in open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matters involving local government for which the public discussion would likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Fourteen point three, twenty twenty three oh twenty two invitation for tender, trustee lease over lots forty seven and forty eight Crown Land two twenty part of Jubilee Park. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the local government regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matter involving local government of which public disclosure would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Fourteen point one, enterprise resource planning, ERP budget variation. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matters involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. Fourteen point five, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J F and H of the local government regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion on this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with things that may directly affect the health and safety of an individual or group of individuals and negotiations relating to the land by the local government under the Acquisition of Land Act nineteen sixty seven. Can I get someone to move that motion please?
Move.
Can I get someone second that motion? councillor Tully? Are all those in favour? And that's carried.
I'd like to move the following motion, that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254 J of the Local Government Regulation for 2012. 14.1, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment 07196 double zero double zero double zero double zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section 254 J D of the Local Government Regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. 14.2, acquisition of property assessment number 03952 double zero double zero double zero double zero double zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254 J G of the Local Government Regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter is in open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matters involving local government for which the public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. 14.3, 2023 O 22 invitation for tender trustee lease over lots 47 and 48 Crown Land 220 part of Jubilee Park. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254 J G of the Local Government Regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matter involving local government of which public disclosure would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. 14.1, enterprise resource planning ERP budget variation. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254 J G of the Local Government Regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matters involving the local government for which the public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. 14.5, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. This matter is considered confidential under section 254 J F and H of the Local Government Regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion on this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with matters that may directly affect the health and safety of an individual or group of individuals and negotiations relating to the land by the local government under the Acquisition of Land Act 1967. Can I get someone to move that motion please?
Move.
Can I get someone to second that motion? Councilor Tully. Are all those in favour? And that's carried. Recommendation, the motion that council moves out of closed council and into open council.
Move.
Deputy Mayor, seconded. Thank you, Councilor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. Council, we're now in open council. Let's kick off with item 14.1, which is the concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment 07196 double zero double zero double zero double zero. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council does not approve a concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges of $909.71 for property assessment of 07196-00000-000 for the period of 01-01-2023 to 3006-2023 under sections 119, 121 A and C, 121 A and 122, 1A of the Local Government Regulation 2012.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Councilor Tully. And all those in favour? And that's carried. Item 14.2, which is the acquisition of property assessment number 03952 double zero double zero double zero double zero. Council Tully, are you declaring an interest?
Sorry, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest because of the real estate that is selling this block.
And do you wish to...
Leave, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I will. I'd like to move that council approve the purchase of the residential freehold property at 21 15th Avenue, lot 14, MPH 14004, at the offer price of $474,000 and approve legal fees estimate of $5,000 for relevant property transfers and searches.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Takes us now to item 14.3, which is the 2023 O 22 invitation for tender, the trustee lease over lots 47 and 48 Crown Land 220, sorry, 220 part of Jubilee Park. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to a, award the tender to Mount Eyes Dirt Bike Club Incorporated over the area described as lots 47 and 48 on Crown Plan RD 220, and two, delegate to the chief executive officer of the authority to finalise all matters in relation to the lease agreement over the area described as lots 47 and 48 on Crown Plan RD 220.
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried. Item 14.4, the enterprise resource planning ERP budget variations. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council approves a budget variation of $298,871 for the ERP implementation as follows: Civica, $188,771, and GWI Digital, $110,100.
Thank you. Seconded for that motion? Thank you, Councilor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. 14.5, which is a notice of intention to sell land for overdue rate charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to a, sell the land in below schedule pursuant to section 142 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, and b, delegate to the chief executive officer its power to a, give a notice of intention to sell the land to all interested parties under section 143 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, and b, take all further steps required under sections 141, 142, 143, 144, 145, and 146 of the Local Government Regulation 2012 to effect the sale of land. Schedule is attached below outlining the lots.
Can you read all that down please?
Okay.
No.
No.
He will.
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Well, councillors, that brings us to the conclusion of this ordinary meeting. The time is now 11:44 AM and I now...